December Board Meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Merry Christmas and happy holidays and welcome to the last board meeting of this year. And an O P from Harbor is going to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. We're so glad that you're here tonight. If you will just take a few minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself and your time in Springville Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, and the rest of the board for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I guess I'll start off by listing off the schools that I went to. I've been in Springville Public Schools for my entire life. Started off at Bay Area Elementary School, headed to Helen Tyson Middle School, then Southwest Junior High School, and now I'm at Harbor. Some of the things I do at Harbor, one most important, I feel, is a club that I'm in called Senior Class Council. I love my advisors, everyone who's in the club. I have a few friends in there. We all get along really well, and I'd say kind of our goals as a council are really to make the year memorable for seniors, like in the name Senior Class Council, but also to maybe provide any support towards graduation, like funds financially. It's kind of our plan, so we'll set up events and do things to collect funds that way. Something else that I'm involved in at Harbor that I really enjoy is actually band. I'm a percussionist in the band, so during marching season I'll play quad tenors, and then during concert season I'll play whatever they need me to play. Sometimes that involves a hammer and an envil or just playing on a keyboard. So that's a little bit about what I do at Harbor. I really enjoy it. I've met a plethora of really good teachers, and I feel like I've made a really great amount of lifelong friends that I hang out with. And I know it's early to say lifelong friends, but the way I get along with them every time we speak or see each other, just I get that feeling, so.
What do you plan on doing upon graduation?
So yeah, after I finish high school in May, I plan on attending the University of Arkansas, where I'm going to be majoring in biochemistry. That reason is kind of because the medical field has always had my eye, and for about seven years I've actually wanted to be a neurosurgeon. So all the classes I've taken thus far, as well as the ones that I'll take in the University of Arkansas, are to kind of help guide me towards that path of neurosurgery.
I see. You've got a lot of AP classes. Do you have a favorite?
I do have a favorite. It's AP Physics C Mechanics. My teacher, Ms. Morledge, is really kind. She's very helpful, especially when you have a question about like, how does this work? This doesn't make any sense. She'll come over and work with you about it. Like, it's more like a... She'll come over and like tutor you about how to do it, because I feel like her goal is really to make sure that you understand more than just are able to like recite what you learned. And I really like it because although it is hard, and sometimes I do struggle with it, being able to solve a problem that you struggled with for maybe an hour, maybe thirty minutes, is just so rewarding to me, and it makes me feel like I'm able to do things that I wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
Board, do you have any other?
I do. Are you the young man that plays the quads upside down?
Ah, that is me. Yes, sir. That was very fun. It was actually my friend's idea in the band. It's a tradition. We go in front of the student section and we play stuff, and we wanted to do something that was kind of memorable for our last year.
How long did it take you to figure out how to do that?
On the spot, actually. So, that was fun.
So you've mentioned band being one of your favorite things. Are you wanting to do that in college, or are you just going to concentrate on school?
That's a good question. Band in college is extremely fun, I've heard, and it looks really fun from just watching the football games. But it's extremely competitive, so if I do want a shot at that, I'm going to have to start practicing a lot more than I have been, but...
Well, if you play the drums upside down, surely you can figure it out the other way.
I don't think anybody at the UVA has done that. I agree.
We appreciate you coming tonight, and we can't wait to hear about your future, and congratulations on graduating in May.
Thank you.
Board, you've had the agenda for a couple of days, and Dr. Cleveland, do we have any changes or...
Yes, ma'am, I have one request. In the portion of the superintendent's area, I asked to add number ten. You all have participated in the Arkansas School Board Association Conference, and it would probably be appropriate, since all the things that happened in this school association, to provide an opportunity to report to the public. Is that okay to add, ASBA report?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition.
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mrs. Creek, to approve the December agenda as...
As amended.
As amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Board, you've also had time to look at the consent agenda. Any requests to pull anything out from it or any additions? I have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mr. Bell, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Cleveland?
Ms. Cook, we have a real treat tonight. We have Young Elementary School. They're going to perform a song about the students this evening and entertain us. It is Christmas season, and it's a time that we're all to be thankful and look who we have coming in. The most precious people.
Too late to be good?
In the spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. In the spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud. Bop, 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 bop. Send your voice to the crowd. Bop, 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 bop. You can join the celebration. Come on, come on, come on, come on, bop, bop. In the spirit, bells are ringing, folks are singing, band is swinging. Got it, got it. In the spirit, music's playing, folks are swaying, holidaying. Got it in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. In the spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit, spirit, holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud. Bop, 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 bop. Send your voice to the crowd. Bop, 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 bop. You can join the celebration. Come on, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration. Come on, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration now. We're in the spirit now.
Okay, just a second. I want you all to turn around and wave at your parents. If your parents have these amazing children, please stand up and give them a hand. Great job. Well, if you weren't in the spirit before, I would imagine you are now. And I think we all need to get glasses, like y'all have. I'm just trying to decide which one I like. I think I want to wear them all.
Good job, everybody.
Y'all did great. Thank you for coming to sing to us.
Good evening. So the next item on our agenda, we have two very, very special recognitions this evening. We have two students in our district who have received QuestBridge National Match scholarships. And just to give you a little bit of an overview, in case you're not familiar with QuestBridge, QuestBridge is an organization, a nonprofit organization, that seeks to match students across the United States with universities that meet their interests in different qualifications through a scholarship process, where students receive a four-year package around approximately $200,000. These packages and scholarships are geared towards first-generation college students and students across the nation that may face barriers to the college application process. If a student is awarded a National Match Scholarship, that scholarship includes tuition and fees, room and board, books and supplies, and travel expenses. The rules of the match are there are no parental contributions and no student loans, and that is for all four years of their college experience. Even more staggering, nationally, this year, there were more than 16,500 applicants. QuestBridge first selected 6,312 finalists to be considered for the scholarship match. This year, they only matched 1,674 of the 16,500 applicants. And so for Springville Public Schools to have two of these, we are beyond ecstatic. And so at this time, I want to introduce both of the students. First, Ezra, if you'll join me. This is Ezra Santos from Don Tyson School of Innovation. He was matched with the University of Chicago for a package worth more than $200,000.
Let them ask you some questions.
Hello. My name is Ezra Santos. I'm a senior at Don Tyson School of Innovation. In fact, I was actually an immigrant from the Philippines for fifteen years, and I transferred here sophomore year. I was really lost in the college application process, because when I was in the Philippines, I remember I was set for life. I knew that I was going to take entrance exams in these different colleges, but then my mom told me, hey, we're moving to America in six months. So transferring here as a sophomore, I didn't really know what to do with the college application process, but my wonderful counselor, Mrs. Jolene Mutter, she referred me to QuestBridge. And winning the College Prep Scholars Award for Juniors, they gave us a conference about how the college application works. And ever since that time, ever since the beginning of my senior year, I've become really competitive with my college applications. And so I'm really grateful to receive a full scholarship to one of the most competitive colleges in America, if not the world. But yeah, I'm really proud, and I'm really thankful that I'm being recognized for it.
So what do you want to study?
I plan to major in physics.
That's incredible. Congratulations. That's a huge deal.
Thank you.
Do you have any of your family with you tonight?
No, my mom is a part-time... My mom's working at home, so...
Okay, so his parents weren't able to join him, but we also want to celebrate them as well. Celebrate them.
Okay. Ouch, that was my foot on the podium, if everyone heard that. Okay, so our next student, our next QuestBridge Match student is Ms. Karen Delgado Garcia from Springville High School. And Karen, if you would like to join me. And Karen received a four-year full scholarship to Washington University in St. Louis for more than $200,000.
Good evening. I'm Karen Delgado from Springville High School. Currently, I'm a senior there. Some of the extracurriculars that I'm participating in right now is I'm vice president for Student Council. I'm also a tennis varsity player, a three-year bowling player, and I'm a law member mentor right now. And I'm also part of the International Baccalaureate Academy. Some of you guys might know me. As my class experience, I planned a trip to Silver Dollar City. I was like, you know, trying to collaborate with my peers and everything like that. And even though that didn't work, I'm super, super grateful for the International Baccalaureate Academy, more specifically Ms. Basil, such a hardworking woman, and she truly does care about all her students, in addition to Ms. Downing, my counselor. I did not realize all the stuff that I was doing, and now it was recognized by her, which really did boost up my confidence and to realize my potential. Will be going to Washington University in St. Louis. I'm planning on majoring in architecture, pre-law, or anywhere in business or psychology. It's one of my biggest interests. Right now, going back to... Sorry, to business. I own a business right now. It's called El Lampago Mechanical Bowl. And I don't know if you guys have seen it, but in Springville High School, we hosted quite a successful prep rally. And it involved that mechanical bowl. I'm so excited that I was able to take that initiative and, you know, invest in something that I'm quite passionate about. So even though if this business does fail or anything like that, I know what to take. I know what did fail and what did not work, or what did work, and from there I can, you know, improve those skills. I'm actually in accounting clerk for Northwest Arkansas Salem Heating and Cooling. I've been there for since 2019, and from there, that did like boost my confidence to maybe start my own business. I really did enjoy having to organize all these documents for this owner that did not have time, you know, for their family in this business as well. So I was... I'm glad that I got to do that community service through Law Academy, but also gain those skills and, you know, gain that insight into the entire, you know, industry, which, you know, I'm quite grateful for. I'm so proud of the people that have helped me. I applaud my teachers, my counselor, and everyone else that was just there for more support. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I can't forget that. I came from Jones Elementary. Seeing there, we might know that Springville might be divided, but as I went through Jones Elementary, I saw, you know, all the struggles, the financial struggles that other people went through. And to me, when I see those people that are still in my high school, and I see them, you know, thriving and, you know, trying to achieve their goals, it really does make me happy, because, you know, they've had this financial burden that their parents couldn't afford this and this and this and this. But they're still gaining... They're going for their goals right now, and I'm so happy that the same people from Jones Elementary, I'm seeing them right now in Springville High School, thriving. I'm so, so proud of them. And as I mentioned, I could not have done this without the support of my family. Three out of the nine siblings that I have, I have my younger sister, Marlene Delgado. I have one of my oldest brothers, Eliseo Delgado. And I have my very supportive older sister, Wendy Rosales. And I have my parents as well, Eliseo Delgado and Teresa Garcia, that have really supported me throughout this entire process. My parents as well are immigrants, and so am I, and so are the nine of my siblings. I came here when I was in first grade, and I did have siblings I could look up to, but however, they're... They have a family. They're old, and they have their... Not old, not old, but you know what I mean. They're adults. They're adults, and they have their own family. They have children. I have my nephew here, Jared Rosales. Don't be shy. And, you know, they're preoccupied with, you know, they're far... Their entire family and trying to raise those kids. So kind of I had to raise myself. My parents don't understand the education system, but when I say that I got a full scholarship, they're like, wow, good job. So thank you. So I'm quite happy that I got to, you know, go along with my parents, trying to learn my own skills, and, you know, try to communicate with them as well, so they can understand a little bit of what I'm doing. Thank you.
That is just fantastic. Congratulations again to both of those students. The next item on our agenda this evening is another really, really exciting recognition, and that has to do with the Arkansas Seal of By Literacy. And so we have three amazing world language teachers here that are going to just give you a quick overview. I also have prepared a slide for you. The Arkansas Seal of By Literacy, as you can see, Springville Public Schools continues to lead the state of Arkansas. We have 956 students who have been awarded the Seal of By Literacy to date. And so with that being said, I'm going to ask Ms. Kristen Nabotny from Springville High, Ms. Ellen Rainey from Harbor High School, and Ms. Melissa Myers from Don Tyson School of Innovation to just give you a very quick overview of the most recent round of selections.
Hey. Sure, you gave a little introductions. This is Kristen Nabotny from Springville. I'm Ellen Rainey from Harbor. And this is Melissa Myers from Don Tyson School of Innovation, and we also have Noemi Martinez from Harbor High School as well. The Arkansas Seal of By Literacy is a certification that recognizes students who demonstrate proficiency in English and another language. It is awarded by two state organizations, the Arkansas Teacher of English to Students of Other Languages and the Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association.
The seal was officially endorsed by the Arkansas Department of Education in June of 2018, making Arkansas the 35th state to have an official seal. Students across the country use the seal as evidence of professional resumes, portfolios, and interviews, and for securing scholarships and higher pay. Students now also have the opportunity to apply for the Global Seal of By Literacy. Details for the Global Seal will be shared in the spring.
Hi. I get to add on to it and brag a little bit more specifically about our kids from this particular fall season. The SEAL application is available every spring and fall. Springville actually was the pilot district, in case you didn't know. I'm going to throw that up there. In 2017, in order to get the data to show that this is actually useful for our current high school students, and then after graduation, what they can do with it, and then to get the Department of Education to endorse it. I think Ms. Tisher shared our, to date, 956 Springville Public Schools students since that initiation, or the initial pilot. As of right now, the total students from that beginning is 2,527 students across the state. So I teach Espanol. I'm not really good with the math, so do a little bit of math. It's almost... It's closer to half-ish, maybe? So we're doing pretty awesome. Sixty-two high schools across the state as well have had students earn the certification, and then there's sixteen different languages other than English. Last spring was... This fall, actually, we had a student earn the language in Tamian.
Ezra, that was here.
Ezra. There we go. And that was the first student in the state to earn, and the... And that was the first student in the state to earn the, the seal in that language. This past spring was the very first time that we were able to have students assess in Marshallees, and Springdale had Marshallees students. So we kinda had to make sure that they were recognized, and I, I'll introduce a couple of students here in a minute. This time we did have more Marshallees students, and the first in the state to earn in Marshallees and Spanish, so it's just, it's growing every application season, and Springdale just, just continues to lead. So I'd like to introduce the students from, we've got students from Harbor and S.H.S. Celeste Espinoza, Espinoza, right? She is a student of Ms. Rainey's, and then I also have Monse, perdón, sorry, Monse Barroso, she is my student, and then Dania Mia, who is also my student, and, yeah, what else am I missing? Oh, supposed to say our principals are really awesome too, because they let, they let us, but truly, they, Mr. Jones and Dr. Greep, and I'm sad I don't know that, Ms. Bortz, Ms. Bortz, they have allowed us to be able to assess our students, because they actually have to take a legitimate assessment in all four language skills, and then we also have to have a ceremony, so they let us coordinate that as well. What else am I missing? Oh, oh my goodness, yes. The most recent big thing, this last spring, Dr. Smith actually was able to secure funds for all of our students who wanted to assess, to take it, take the assessment for free. In the past, students had, or, or the clubs, student clubs have been paying $17 per exam, and this last spring and this fall, Dr. Smith has been able to make that happen for free for all of our kids, so we really appreciate her for doing that as well.
Do you all have questions?
Is this our first Chinese?
Second?
Second.
This is our second Chinese.
Okay, that's what I was.
And I did not see that on the awards chart, so I missed the Filipino one.
Any questions?
Yeah, Ezra was last year.
It was last year. Oh, last year, that's right, okay.
The, the, the press release that comes out is just for each season, so that's, we have a bigger.
Okay, well if you all don't have any questions, thank you. You all are welcome.
Okay, and next, Ms. Fink.
Good evening, board, I would like to continue our celebration and invite Ms. Olivia Wright from Hellstrom Middle School to join me at the podium. Olivia entered the Second Annual Bill of Rights Essay Contest. It was a contest that was sponsored by the 7th and 8th U.S. District Courts. The essay topic was the importance of the Bill of Rights. Participants were from the East and West District, which was composed of 10 states, and most of the finalists, which this is what I really find amazing, were 8th graders, and there were only two 7th grade finalists, Olivia being one of them, and she won the entire essay contest. So as a finalist, she won a $50 Amazon gift card, and as the essay contest winner, she won $500, so I'm gonna ask Olivia to come up and say a few words to you.
Hi. Hi, like she said, I'm a 7th grader at Hellstrom Middle School, and I first heard about the essay through my social studies teacher, Ms. Marla Ott, and once I heard about it, I was so intrigued by the topic, which was the importance of the Bill of Rights, I've always been interested in that stuff, so immediately after that, I spent multiple days after school, before school, and during my lunch periods, working on the essay, and a few weeks after I submitted it, I found out that I was a finalist, and that I won the Western District of Arkansas, and that I would have to pee against 17 8th grade finalists in a Zoom the next day. So I attended the Zoom with the U.S. Court of Appeals, and I found out with like a lot of suspense, this took like 20 minutes. And I found out that I tied for first place with an 8th grader, and got the prize money, and it was, it was a great experience. I love how all my teachers and my peers supported me throughout the whole thing, throughout the whole thing, even though they didn't really know what it was, they, they supported me and helped me with it, and I would like to thank all the, my teachers at Hellstrom Middle School.
And I think we have your mom and maybe your dad here?
Yes, and my aunt. And my aunt.
Any questions?
How long was this essay?
The word limit was 450 to 600 words, so about two pages double-spaced.
What was your biggest takeaway from all your research?
Could you repeat the question, I couldn't really hear it.
What was your biggest takeaway from all your research that you did?
I did do a lot of research, that was like the main portion of it, and, um, I really don't know how to answer that, it's a lot, I did spend a lot of time researching, which is what I love, and I did have a lot of moments where I was stuck, and I didn't know how to write, like you know how writing is, it can lead you to like moments where you don't know how to say stuff that you want to say, but the researching.
So again, again here, the most impressive thing about all of this is she's in 7th grade, right?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And look at how she's speaking in front of this group.
Absolutely.
Again, I mean, I'm 55 and I struggle, that's impressive.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good evening. We'd like to introduce Ms. Cecilia Bates, she is one of our TVI teachers for the district, and earlier this fall, she was awarded the Joyce Augburn Memorial Award. I'm gonna let her tell you what that is in just a minute, but I wanted to share, part of the process was that her colleagues and other people that she works with, from the State Department to outside agencies, wrote letters of recommendation in order for her to get this. So I just want to let you know what she is doing, not just in Springdale Schools. So Calvin Churchwell works with Blazing Canes Incorporated. He says that Cecilia jumped right in and provided high-quality services for each student that she works with, she doesn't back away from a challenge, which helps each student excel towards their goals. She has participated with the Arkansas AER Professional Development Committees for a number of years, until being elevated to the position of Chair for the entire state for the committee, and in the summer of a pandemic, provided professional development for 25 attendees. And 25 doesn't sound like a lot, but we only have two TVI teachers here, so you can imagine the number of students we have, 25 is a lot across the state. Cynthia White is a vision consultant with Educational Services. She said, "CC volunteers on the weekend with a transition program which provides a wide range of recreational activities consisting of both outdoor and indoor events that help students with social and community awareness, following, or allowing VI students opportunities to meet other VI students in the community." And she's also a mentor in orientation and mobility, supervising direct instruction of teachers that are in the VI and graduate programs, helping them obtain their certificates. Another one of her colleagues with vision consultants for the state says, "CC consistently assists other districts that do not have VI teachers to help them serve their students with learning braille through Zoom." Not only does she help provide PD for teachers, she's continually attending PD conferences both nationally and internationally to bring the latest technology and instructional techniques to students in our state. And then, most recently, two teachers at Turnbo Elementary were working with one of our VI students, and Abby Hawthorne said, "At the beginning of the year, when I found out I had a VI student, I didn't know how to support him emotionally, socially, or academically. I formed a bond with Cecilia very quickly, and she coached me on how to be an effective teacher and support the, support system for him. Through this bond, I saw my student grow and become more confident and independent." And then Ms. Tracy Wieland at East Facilitor at Turnbo. With Ms. Bates' help, and I think you all saw this article on the news, my students were able to scan classmates and teachers into a 3D yearbook that the students presented to our vision student. Ms. Bates met with my students several times to help them get their well wishes in braille. Everyone who has met Ms. Bates comes away as a better person with a new understanding of what potential really means. And truly, the vision students, we only have a few in our district, but to have an entire East program understand what it meant for this child to be able to see his classmates was truly amazing, and that student is now moved on to one of our middle schools and is still inspiring others. So I give you Ms. C.C. Bates.
Dr. Cleveland and the board, I want to thank you guys for honoring me tonight. I was honored to be nominated and win the Joyce Augburn Memorial Award, which is on, which is given to the Arkansas Teacher of the Visually Impaired of the Year, and so it's all based on, you know, whoever advocates for their students and just goes above and beyond for our students, so, yeah.
It definitely sounds like you have.
I tried my best.
Or do you have any questions?
We were gonna give a demonstration, but we didn't know if anybody wanted to put the blindfolds on, can run any?
I've done some of that too, so if anybody ever wants to, just come see me.
How long have you been?
I've been in Springdale for four years now.
Was this position?
Yes, yes.
We're lucky to have you.
Yes, thank you, I'm luckily, I'm glad to be here.
Congratulations.
Tonight, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kara Sudbury, and, who is the Assistant Principal at George Junior High School, and Mr. Nathan Olson, who is the Assistant Choir Director at Springdale High School for their outstanding, outstanding work organizing and putting together "Caroling on the Creek." I'll just give you some stats here, it is, at the, at this event, there were over 750 elementary students and 600 secondary students, and it is estimated that there were approximately 8,000 people at this event. I will tell you, thank you, Mr. Olson, and thank you, Ms. Sudbury, for all of your work, for making this night of caroling and celebration possible, and also, thank you to our community sponsors, you can see those on the screen there. And also, what would we do without Trent Jones and the productions team that made all of the razzle-dazzle happen that night? I would just say, it was a really great night, and that last song that we sang, I don't know if you were there, but it was very moving to be there and be a part of that, so I just want to applaud the work of these two fine individuals, and just tell them how much I appreciate them tonight for this "Caroling on the Creek," for being so successful.
Hello, well thank you for having us. This is an event that we started in 2016, out of, we saw a need, the city of Fayetteville and the city of Bentonville offer singing on the square that, that you sign up through, for through your public school, but Springdale didn't have that, and so we just decided to make our own, and it, and it took off, every, just getting bigger and bigger. And so we are very thankful for this opportunity to provide this experience for our students and for the community, and thank you for saying that about the last piece, that was our goal, was to have, offer an opportunity for all to experience music, because it is a lifelong skill that you can enjoy forever, so.
So how much time went into preparing for something this?
We start, yeah, we start in, in September, well, we, we started in the summer, but with our, with the teachers, we started in September. It was really important to Mr. Donnell this year that all schools were involved, when we started, I think we had seven schools, and this year we had all 29, so that was a huge, huge improvement as far as attendance, so.
Well, it just gets alone and trying to get all.
Yes. Yes.
It was wonderful.
Thank you.
They're heading off to a concert, so thank you all for being here tonight. Next, I'd like to recognize the three high school choir directors, Clint just came in, so I'm asking you to come right back up. Clint Pienalto, Harbor High School, Millie Peters, Springdale High School, Cindy Key, Don Tyson School of Innovation, for their outstanding leadership with the core program this year. Just gonna highlight some, some quick highlights. The Springdale High School Core Program had 171 students, and you'll see it on this next slide, students who qualified for the All-Region Choir, and as you can see, that represents 54% of the All-Region Choir. Okay, so that's just Springdale kids. In addition to that, of those 117 students, 94 of those qualified for eligibility for Allstate, to try out for Allstate, which is just really unheard of, and I will say, the junior high choir program did as well, they had 227 students qualify for the All-Region Choir, which was 65% of the total number of students in the junior high All-Region Choir. And I'm gonna say this to you, and look you in the eye when I say this, these are three incredible leaders who inspire kids every day, who engage kids every day, who have integrity beyond integrity, and I am honored and just ecstatic that I get to work with them every day, every single day. So I give you the, the great work of these three individuals, and let them come up here and just answer any questions you may have, come on up.
Thanks. Y'all have, I'm just curious, were any of you in an All-Region Choir when you were in junior high or high school?
You've heard me speak.
We're not that talented.
I mean, I tried out.
Or band? Band?
I was a band.
Did you, do you look back on those experiences still and have fond memories of your experiences?
I got my medal.
Yeah, good, because that's the goal, I think that's what we want for our kids too, to have that experience, and no matter what they're doing later on, whatever career they decide, that, that hopefully we've made some kind of an impact, and they've had a good experience with choir or band or whatever it is, but it, you know, you can't, and I know if you guys still think back on that, you can't experience that ever again, you know, it's such a neat experience to be able to sit on a stage with 100 other people and from other parts of the state when you're doing Allstate, and being able to come together and create music that, and you can't ever duplicate that again, it's a really, really great experience for our kids.
I think probably the most impressive is the sustainability of the program.
Well, and.
How long has been successful without really?
Yeah, but that happens because of, you know, the support that we get from, from our building administrators and teachers and our school board and our superintendent, and you guys feel that it's an important thing for our kids to experience as well.
Well, I think it, it is also how the experience that the students have. If you talk to any of the families of any of those kids, they will talk about it for hours, they are so proud and so thankful for the work that you do, and for the work that, I mean, it's, if you get on social media at all and see all of the pictures and all of the excitement from each performance from All-Region and Allstate, and it just says a lot to the time and effort that you put in to making sure that our students are, they found their, I mean, their niche, exactly where they excel, and, and their families, I know, are appreciative, and we're appreciative, and we just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to draw your attention to the screen, and we just want to come to thank some of our fantastically generous community partners. One of our, our vision statement at the Treehouse Pantry is, "Community partnerships equal community success," and I think that it's on full display right here as well. Walmart, I'm just gonna go through some of these, 12 pallets, I mean, that's pallets, that's not boxes, pallets of food, four pallets of school supplies, The Pack Shack, 5,400 meals, those were 5,400, 5,400 meals. Springdale Graduate, love this one, $20,000 to provide Christmas for students and families and to support the work of the Treehouse Pantry. And then Robinson Avenue Church of Christ donated coats to students' families, we've already given out much of those, many of those coats to those families, if you'll go to the next one. Tyson Foods, 3,800 cases of frozen protein, that's cases of food, anywhere's from 10 to, you know, 40 pounds of, of food, that have been given out just this year alone. Burger King, 5,000 donation to students and families in the Springdale School District. Fellowship, 480 families received Christmas due to the generosity of fellowship, and then UAMS, 700 hygiene kits that were made and given out to students. And then UAMS, 700 hygiene kits that were made and given out to students. I'll tell you, those hygiene kits, too, we take that for granted, it sounds like a little thing, but, you know, if you're a student that doesn't have deodorant and you're, you know, and, and you don't smell as good as you'd like to smell, that hygiene kit's a really important item to have. And then the last little piece I'd like to recognize is this Thursday, through the generous donation, a special thanks to Tyson Foods, who have donated 30,000 pounds of protein for this Thursday that'll be given away to 500 families. So that's 520 families this Thursday from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Treehouse Pantry, and just very, very grateful to live in a place where we have such great community partnerships. Absolutely. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Cleveland, brought some special guests with me today. If you guys want to come up on over here. This is most of our communications team, and I'm very thankful to have them here as we go through some first semester recap with you. So just, I want to give you an overview of some things that we've done since July 1st. This will just be flyby, we're just going to kind of go high level. So some of our executive communication that we've done, as you know, we, we had some serious need for transportation. Our team has created over 25 assets. We created a new webpage. I was on the news media probably over 20 times or so on every channel. It probably felt like more than that for me, but we also worked with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Donnell for Free and Reduced. We created 15 new assets. We messaged, we communicated the message over 50 times, modernized the webpage. Substitute Needs, we modernized the webpage and created over 25 posts and interviews. We also did a really interesting thing where we partnered with the Chamber for a Super Sub campaign, which was a really sharp idea from Dr. Cleveland about just trying to have buy-in across the entire community to realize the school, and we all know this, but the school's the heartbeat of the community, and just having our businesses work together to be engaged with our kids, that's always a good thing. We've been working really hard with our new webmaster, Dustin Mapes. Here's just some high-level stuff that he's done. We've modernized and worked through the process of updating our Enroll Now! page, our ESL page. We've created a site map. We worked on the Child Nutrition Free and Reduced page. So you can see his fingerprints all over the webpage. These numbers are awesome, bonkers. This top row is Facebook, so our English Facebook has 37,000 followers. Since July 1st, we've added 2.6 million reach. Interestingly enough, 74% of our audience is female, with the largest audience 35 to 44. Right here in the middle, you can see Esquela de Springdale. I hope all of you follow that. That's the great work of Maribel Tapia, who you'll get to meet here in a second. She now has 2,000 followers on that page that she manages, 31,000 reached since July 1st. 80% of the audience is female, with the largest audience also being 35 to 44. And then you'll meet Rosanna Anatok here. She is running our Marshallese TV, and she has grown that to 220 followers with 13,000 reach since July 1st. Interestingly enough, check that out, the largest audience is 25 to 34. That's kind of interesting. The Springdale Schools Instagram is up to 6,000 followers. A lot of that is the great leadership of Leslie Orozco, who's back here as well. 15,600 reached since July 1st, 79% of the audience is female. If you notice, this was really neat for all of us. Notice the second-largest audience on Instagram is 45 to 54. Isn't that interesting? I thought it would have gone the other way, that it would have been, you know, younger, but 45 to 54 on that. And we joke often in our team that, no matter what I do, no matter what happens, I will only ever be known for as many emails as I send. And here's statistical proof. We, one of the things that we worked on with Dr. Cleveland was an internal communication strategy, and we do that through produced emails. So we've produced 76 smores, 106 Mail Chimps, for a total of 182 emails since July 1st, with about a 400,000 open and view rate. So a smore is like a digital newsletter, and it's immersive, it's multimedia, it's awesome. And so 182 emails, don't anybody calculate how many school days that is, that just means I'm sending you guys lots of communication. Timely, authentic, transparent, multiple languages, yes, sir. So here's some great work from our public relations, which is headed up by Leslie. Just kind of flyby, we did some National Merit semifinalists. We featured National Principals Month. One thing we were really proud of is when our test scores were released, we had 11 schools that raised their test scores last year, and I mean, I just thought, what great work from our teachers and our principals all across the district. So we really took a lot of dedicated time to feature those 11 schools and the OEP awards as well. We made sure that each school got their own post, got their own smore, got their own email. We featured them on local news, just giving our, our teachers and principals some love for the great work they're doing. And our media, you know, and that's, that's my background, so I always love digging into these numbers. 456 videos have been uploaded to our YouTube channel since July 1st with 900,000 views. 150 live events streamed, 52% of our viewers are female, with our largest audience being 18 to 24. I thought that was kind of cool. You can see on here, this is the Cafecito y Charla. That's something that Maribel concepted, and it's brilliant. It's a weekly show in Spanish that airs on Saturday morning, and what she's done, very intelligently, is connected the school with community leaders, and we shoot it in local businesses. And then we air it on Esquela de Springdale and Springdale Schools YouTube channel. She's done nine shows, that's had 2,500 views. And then Rosanna Quietly is one of the, you know, best assets we have. She has produced 13 shows in Marshallese. I don't think she's missed a week. Yes.
Did I hear applause there?
That's right. 5,000 views from her work, very proud of her and, and the great work that she's doing, and she continues to grow every week and get better. Graduate of Archer, too, by the way. So one of the things I've always prided myself on is student-integrated production. You can look at these slides and the data a little bit later, but we were part of, isn't Kara Sedbury and Nathan Olson awesome? I mean, aren't they just amazing? And they're, they're kind of representative of just the great things in Springdale, and so we get the ability to integrate with them, so we helped them produce Caroling on the Creek. Remember the district faculty meeting that we did at the beginning of the year? And we had the band, and we had Imagine, and that was our team, and that was awesome. Treehouse Pantry was great, and then we're still producing Springdale today with advisor Craig Pasquinzio at Don Tyson. So, you know, I'm hopeful when you see all these stats and data that what we're really doing is we're mobilizing to tell the story of, of Springdale, and we are proud to do it. It's an honor, and I'm thankful to serve as your Communication Director. And I'd like, just briefly, to let our team just introduce themselves and say hi, if that's okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to put this up here. It's Debbie. Okay. Good evening, board and Dr. Cleveland. My name is Leslie Orozco. First of all, thank you for having us here tonight. I feel very honored to be part of the communications team. They are like family now. As a graphic designer and photographer, I've really enjoyed being able to use my skills to serve Springdale Schools. In my role as a public relations specialist, I manage our social media accounts, I run our district campaigns, create our flyers, and this is actually my second year on the team, which I'm really proud of, so I look forward to continuing my growth within the department. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity for serving Springdale Schools and telling the wonderful stories of our students and our community.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, sorry. My name is Luis Alfaro. I'm in charge of the live production, so I do a lot of the YouTube live streams, I do a lot of the backend work on that. I assist teachers when they need me. I joined the team in late September, so I was kind of thrown into the middle of the semester. I've learned a lot, I'm very thankful for this opportunity, I'm very lucky to be a part of this team, and I'm excited for the upcoming semester and, and thereon. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Dr. Cleveland, my name is Marie Vel Tapia, and I am a content creator for our social media in Spanish and also manage our ESL communications for the district. In my free time, I host a weekly show, like Trent said, Cafecito y Charla, Coffee and Chat, and what he didn't share is that my show has been streamed or watched in different countries like Spain, Guatemala, Honduras, Peru, and Mexico. Yes, it really is amazing. I am beyond thankful for the constant support that you bring us, that you give us. Because of you, I'm able to do this and reach our families, all of our families in multi-language languages, and that's so important. So thank you guys for your support. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Rosanna Anetac. I am a graduate of Archer Learning Center. I have started as an intern last year in the Communications Department, and now I'm actually a part of the team, and I'm forever thankful for that. And I produce our show, Marshallese TV. What we do is we highlight the success for our students, and we also interview some of our Marshallese community leaders, and I just want to say I'm forever thankful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Just give a shout out to Travis Sherman, who's not here because he's working a live event, as he always is. Our other teachers as well. Mike Day and Dustin Mapes are unable to be here, but their work is represented everywhere. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll give a, just a brief report on what happened last week. We had our annual conference in Little Rock for the Arkansas School Boards Association. I, I went down on Tuesday evening because my day started early Wednesday with meetings. I serve on the Executive Board of Arkansas School Boards Association. And of course, the big news, I'm sure everybody's heard of it throughout the nation, is this letter that was sent to the White House from NSBA without any of the state's input or any of the local school boards' input. And we, while, while we were down there, we met as a state association and had voting members from all of the school boards. I think we have 235 school boards across the state, and I think 135 of them were represented at the, at the meeting where we actually voted to withdraw from the National School Boards Association. We are no longer a part of the National School Boards Association. We are in the process of trying to come up with an alternative. Our Executive Director, Dr. Tony Prothrow, has been with us at the State Board Association for about nine years now, and we are one of three states, Arkansas, Mississippi, and Louisiana, that have been meeting as a, we call it the Southern Region Association. We're the only one of those going on across the United States, so I think we're uniquely positioned as a group that will hopefully be a part of whatever's coming next. Dr. Prothrow and the Executive Directors from Mississippi, Louisiana, and the other, I think we were the 18th state to withdraw from NSBA, so all of those folks are meeting on a regular basis, trying to figure out what the next step is. So there's more news to come, but the big news is, we are no longer a part of or tied to National School Boards Association. So that's kind of a big deal. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak. I didn't get to go to any of the breakouts. When you're on the Executive Board, you don't really have time to, to do the breakout stuff a lot of times, so I didn't get to participate in any of those. Does anybody else want to talk about what, what they did?
You didn't get an award.
Me? Oh. I got an award because I've been, I'm old and I've been around a long time. I got what's called the Platinum Award, which means I've had over 400 hours of continuing ed over the last 14 years, so it just means I've been around a long time, so.
I didn't get that award.
For those of you that don't know, we're required by state law to have so many hours a year of continuing education to become better school board members and to both learn what's going on in the state and in the nation. Also, for us, it's a great time to be able to get together and learn and hear and talk to the other states, or the other people within this state. Does anyone else have? We did more, this time, they did more big speakers than individual breakout sessions, and we had some great ones, just reminding us to keep our students first and to make sure we keep an eye on all students, and, and sometimes the ones that get, that fall behind a little bit are the ones that we need to come alongside the most. And so I thought it was a great opportunity, and just glad that we were all back together and that it was in person, so. Next, Melissa.
Last month, I was able to recognize the Office of Educational Policy Elementary Schools that had high growth on the ACT Aspire, and then literally the next day after the board meeting, they released our middle schools, and so I'm here to celebrate our Office of Educational Policy High Growth Middle Schools. So overall growth, top 20 in the state was Helston Middle School, and they were actually number five in the state. They made the top 20 list, but ranked number five in the state, which is a huge accomplishment and achievement. I know Dr. Byford was here earlier, but had a prior commitment that she had to leave for, so we'll celebrate her in her absence. Overall growth, top five in the region was Helston Middle School. Math growth, top 10 in the state was Helen Tyson Middle School. Patrick, is it up here? ELA growth, number three in the state was Helston Middle School. And ELA growth, top five in the region was Helston Middle School. So let's give our middle schools a round of applause. And Patrick, you just stay right on up here. Okay. About a week ago, we were, we were notified that we had several schools that were recognized by the Office of Educational Policy for beating the odds, and these awards are for schools whose students are demonstrating high academic growth despite serving a population where at least 66% of their students are free reduced lunch. So we had several schools that we wanted to recognize this evening. So principals, when I call your school, if you'll come stand behind me. Elementary, top 10 combined content growth, so this is math and ELA. 40% of the schools on this list were from Springdale. George Elementary was ranked number two in the state. Tyson Elementary was ranked number three. Monitor Elementary ranked number four, and Harp Elementary, number 10. Top 10 high-growth in math, 50% of the schools on this list were from Springdale. This goes to George Elementary, Monitor Elementary, NAP Elementary, Tyson Elementary, Top five math growth in our region, 80% of this list were Springdale, so there's only one school on there that was not from Springdale. George was ranked number one in our region, as well as Monitor, NAP, and Tyson Elementary Top 10 in the state ELA growth, 40% of the list was Springdale Schools. George Elementary was ranked number one. Tyson Elementary, Monitor Elementary, and Westwood Elementary. Top five in the region for ELA growth, 60% of this list were from Springdale. George Elementary ranked number one. Tyson Elementary and Monitor Elementary. Helen Tyson was ranked number one in the state for overall content growth on the ACT Aspire, number one from all middle schools in Arkansas. They were ranked number two for top 10 They were ranked number two for top 10 math growth, and they were number one in the region for math growth. So, congratulations to our schools. And I am going to ask Kimberly to help me distribute these certificates. Okay.
You guys can sing for us.
I don't have the right glasses.
Not for OEP. That is separate from the state awards money. But several of the schools that are up here being recognized this evening received part of that $700,000 from the state. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Great job.
I now want to give an overview of the PLC Institute that our district was able to attend. Our district has a vision of being the, a leading school district for a model of the professional learning community process in the nation. That is our vision. That is what we're hoping to accomplish. Our schools have been engaged in the professional learning network for many years. Our administrators and our teachers know how important this work is to the success of our students in our schools. And last year, we began reinvesting in this process and really examining our practices to make sure that we were doing the work that needed to be done. And we focused our conversations on four critical questions. What do we want our students to know? How are we going to know if they've learned it? How are we going to teach our standards? And what are we going to do when students haven't learned it? And what are we going to do when they have learned it? So, how are we going to intervene and enrich? So, last week, our district had the awesome opportunity to send approximately 150 teachers and administrators to the Professional Learning Community Institute in Little Rock. We learned side by side with the PLC experts, which included Mike Matoast, Bob Baker, and Louise Cruz. The curriculum and instruction team want to thank Dr. Cleveland, and we want to thank our school board for allowing this opportunity to happen for our schools, our teachers, and our administrators. I could probably stand up here and talk for hours about all that I learned, but I'm not going to do that. I'm actually going to ask members of our school team to come forward and share their experiences. So, I'm going to let Ms. Tisher introduce. Secondary? So, first, to share for our secondary experience is Ms. Lindley, Sissy Lindley, principal at Southwest Junior High, and two of her teachers.
And while they're coming up, I'll just tell you a little bit about this picture. So, our district, back in July, actually partnered with Mike Matoast, and he zoomed in virtually with our administrators and our instructional facilitators. And he said, "When you come to the PLC Institute in Little Rock, I will meet just with your team." So, that is actually a picture of the 150 people we were able to take to this institute, meeting with Mike Matoast, which is kind of a big deal. He's kind of like, I don't know, the Tom Cruise of professional... The LeBron James of the NBA. Yeah. He's pretty incredible.
Good afternoon. I'm Sissy Lindley, principal at Southwest. And as someone you hired to be an instructional leader in our district, I can't thank you enough. John Hattie says, "The number one way to improve, improve learning is improve collective teacher efficacy. Build your teachers, and learning will improve." So, you provided 150 of us to go together and learn together. And that was a mon, I'm not even expense, wherever Kelly is. It was a big expense, but also a big undertaking. And so, thank you so much for that. I brought two young teachers with me. They got to experience their first time in a PLC Institute and their first time in this kind of national PD setting. And so, I'm bringing Rachel Fabricant and Tom Morris, and they're just going to quickly kind of tell you how we work to build their efficacy, that collective, we're going to work together, learn together, and now they're going to lead together.
Sorry. I get kind of nervous in front of adults. I can, I can do, you know, in front of kids all day, but for some reason, in front of adults, I get a little nervous. So, my name is Tom Morris. I'm a math teacher and a football coach at Southwest Junior High, ninth grade, Algebra I. This is my first year in the Springdale family. It's actually my first year in Arkansas. And this is actually my first year experiencing the PLC process. So, as a newcomer to this process, I was absolutely skeptical and tentative, not understanding, I guess, the rationale behind it. But, as I've, I've never been a part of, a part of the team before, but the ability to work collaboratively, collaboratively with my fellow teachers has actually increased my teaching ability tenfold. But, more importantly, it's increased my students' learning in class, retention, and, and the overall environment of my classroom, which, as we all know, in these unprecedented, unprecedented times is the most important thing. So, truly, I'm up here to say, as a, from a young teacher's perspective, my first year in Springdale, I want to say thank you all for letting me go to this opportunity and learn and become a better teacher. So...
I am Rachel Fabricant. I am the dance coach at Southwest, and I also teach science, ninth grade science, physical science, the best subject ever. So, I, thank you first. It was an amazing opportunity. It was great. I've never seen that many teachers come together to learn together. So, listening to all these professionals speak on their experiences throughout their career was very encouraging. These experts provided us with all of these tools and resources necessary to find success on our own journey of learning and growing. Even as teachers, we are still learners. So, I, I did realize that PLC, like, this is a community, and within the PLC, we have our teams. And as professionals, we come together to learn together. And this is your team, and your team grows with your community. One of my biggest takeaways was one of the breakout sessions I attended with Julia, no, Julie Schmidt. Her breakout was called "Protocols for Results: Turning Data into Information." I've learned so much from this. I, we've tried this experience with data before, and being able to sit in her breakout and listen to what she's saying, I just, like, felt at ease. She gave us lots of tools and resources. She showed us how she analyzes data and how she organizes data, and really gave us tips to lead intentional data discussions, which data's going to push everything we do in the classroom, and it's going to help us with our instruction. So, that was a huge takeaway for me. Yes, so, thank you so much for this, for this opportunity. Yeah, this was my first conference. It was amazing.
I now want to invite Ms. Jill Jackson from Jones Elementary and her team to the podium.
Shorty. Good evening, board, and good evening, Dr. Cleveland. So, when Ms. Fink asked me to speak tonight about the PLC Institute, I kind of chuckled just a little bit because, number one, I was the principal hired in the middle of a pandemic, so I actually haven't been to a board meeting. This is my first board meeting. So, I was like, "You're actually joking me, right?" Because I have never spoken in front of the board. So, this is a little bit nerve-wracking for me to come and speak in front of a conference that we attended for three days. But sure, Ms. Fink, I'll sure do that for you. Also, I just want to introduce my team to you that I took with me. So, this is, I have a kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Cromwell. I have a first grade teacher, Ms. Panky. Fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Fitch. And then, I also have a second grade teacher, Mrs. Doyle, who's going to speak with you a little bit about the Institute as well. If you have never traveled with five women in a car together, which we chose to do, you should, or shouldn't. I'm not sure. You decide. But we did have a really good time, and it was a great bonding experience for all of us. So, first, I do want to thank you for this opportunity for our teachers to attend this, this Institute together, and, and not even just as a, as our school community, but as a district. The amount of learning that took place over these three days, I truly believe is going to change our professional learning communities across not just our school, but also our district. The time that we spent not just with our school, but with the other elementary schools, with the middle schools, with the junior highs, and with the high school, with the high schools, it really allowed us to see that, that it gave us some time together to really get all of our arrows going in the same direction, which is what we continue to talk about in our administrative meetings and our PLCs that we have going on in our schools. But just to empower not only our administrators, but also to empower our teachers. And so, now, you know, as we talked the whole way back about, "Oh, my gosh, this is what we're going to do. This is what we want to do." It was just such a great thing to see, that not only did we go, but we took these teachers that went back. And so, now, just hearing the conversations in the building, and every day after school, watching these four ladies talking about it after we dismissed the kids, it's just, it's been a great experience. And so, I feel like it allowed us the opportunity to open doors with other buildings throughout the district, to start that vertical alignment piece that we've been talking about and collaborating about that we've been missing. And so, I just want to thank you for that opportunity, because it, I think it's going to be a blessing for our students, for our district, for our kids, and for our staff. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to my second grade teacher, Mrs. Doyle, and she's going to share away some of her big takeaways, or our big takeaways, and inspirations that we had from the conference.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Doyle. I teach second grade at Jones Elementary. And I first want to thank you for the amazing opportunity to go to the PLC at Work Institute. The learning that took place was amazing. The collaboration was amazing, and the relationships that we built were amazing. I wanted to share with you a few of our aha moments, our big takeaways. So, we went to all these outbreaks, breakout sessions, and our biggest takeaway was that public schools were not created for all students to succeed, and that's a hard thing for teachers to think about. Horace Mann, when he created the system, created the system for a select group. Minorities were not included. Girls were not included. Students of poverty were not included, and students that were learning English were not included. So, we have to completely rethink how we are doing things in the building, in the district. How do we do that? We do that through these PLCs. We need an update. We take our phones. We update our phones. Public education needs an update. So, they talked about, if all students were to succeed, what would that do for our country? What would that do for our community? So, it really got us thinking. That was our big thinking, probably the whole entire trip, just really thinking about, if we could get all students to succeed, how amazing would that be for the country, for our community? So, how do we do PLCs? How do we get this system going? We have to get a guaranteed and viable curriculum. What does that mean? We have to look at those standards. We have to decide what's important. And we have to decide what we can realistically do in a school year. So, teacher teams have to be the ones that look at that curriculum, create their curriculum, and decide what is most important. We take that huge standards that we have. We narrow it down to what's most important and hone in on those skills. We then, those teams create assessments that they have decided together. We are giving teachers power, making teachers the experts in what they teach and how they assess it. We assess it. We look at it. Which kids are learning? What do we need to do to help those kids succeed? A lot of that's just more time. So, we reteach what they need to learn. Those students that are succeeding, we push them on. We give them more. Ooh, I'm trying not to shake. I'm a little nervous. So, then, we do all that. So, how do we know that they do that? We look at that assessment. Another soundbite that we all loved, "In God we trust, but everybody else needs data." So, we have to see them growing on paper. That was a big takeaway for us. The thought process is, is that we are moving from a focus on teaching to focusing on student learning. And that's a big shift. It sounds like just words, but if you really think about it, it's a big shift from teaching, how teachers teach, to are students learning? What are students learning? So, how do we get there? PLC pro, process, of course. We have to get our teachers on board with this. We have to give them clarity before competence. We have to give them the why before they are going to be able to do this. And we have to change the way teachers think about themselves. Our, probably our favorite soundbite, I think, is that teachers should be presenting themselves as, "We are part of an elite team dedicated to the arduous task of breaking students from the cycle of poverty," not educators. "We are breaking the cycle of poverty." Thank you, guys.
You're a little bit passionate.
So, we do have a treat for you. We learned that in order to be part of this PLC community, you have to be deputized, right? And so, we have a lot of deputies in the audience. So, deputies, would you please stand? PLC deputies, please stand. And I'm going to invite Ms. Cromwell up to, in front of the podium, to lead us, to lead us in this process. And then, because you're the leaders of our district and you make these important decisions, we're going to do it again so we can deputize you.
Here or there?
Let's go in front.
Well, I was going to just stand on the stool.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, you want to stand on the stool?
Yeah. Thanks.
The first time Dr. Cruz did this, he stood on a chair.
Not on a chair.
No.
It's safety.
I know. That's why I'm up here. Okay, so, I'm going to tell you and also show you, we are going to, what a PLC is. A school slash district becomes a professional learning community when we, the educators, engage in an ongoing process of collaboration. This collaboration takes place in recurring cycles of collective inquiry. We are constantly going to ask ourselves, I forgot that part. Thank you, Ms. Doyle, at our schools through data, which kids got it and which kids didn't? And most importantly, what are we going to do about it? And then, we do the most revolutionary thing, because hope is not a strategy. We take action. And why are we constantly doing this? Because this is about all of our kids learning at high levels. And now, it is y'all's turn to be deputized, if you would rise.
Okay, the things we do for y'all.
Okay, if you have a paper, you can read it with me. Okay, ready? I'll go slow. A school slash district becomes a professional learning community when we, the educators, engage in an ongoing process. Very ongoing. Slows down a little bit in December. And then, we still go. We get back up there. Okay. Of collaboration. This collaboration takes place in recurring cycles of collective inquiry. We are constantly going to ask ourselves at our schools through data, which kids got it and which kids didn't? And most importantly, what are we going to do about it? And then, we do the most revolutionary thing, because hope is not a strategy. We take action. Yes. And why are we constantly doing this? Because this is about all of our kids learning at high levels.
Good job. That was great.
So, you are now all official deputies of the Professional Learning Communities process, and you can now define that process. We'll give you a little handout to help you remember. At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Kelly Bortz to the podium, and she is going to just quickly walk through the 2021 Charter School Report to the public.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and school board. I'm pleased to present our 2021 Report to the Public as required by our charter status. To start off, just to review our mission statement at Don Tyson School of Innovation, the Don Tyson School of Innovation's mission is to inspire students to imagine their greatest dreams through innovative education. That's what we try to do every day. Our vision, as you will see through the slides that I'm presenting tonight, accelerated advanced college and industry. I think with everything we do, that that vision is reflected with our internships, apprenticeships that we work with students on, options for advanced placement program. Students can earn three hours of concurrent credit, all the way to 60 hours for an associate's degree, and also industry certifications that are tied to our career, career and technical program. are onsite at Don Tyson School of Innovation. And our VIA, Virtual Innovation Academy K5, we're currently at 193 students, and sixth through 12th grade, we're around 400 students. So total enrollment is just over 2,400 students. Our demographics, free and reduced, we're at 47% English language learners, 14%, and then students with disabilities at 8%. So an exciting event that we had was just the ribbon cutting and the official naming of the Pat Ellison Performing Arts Center. And we really officially opened the doors in May, but since May, and obviously we didn't really have any events over the summer, but we've already hosted 35 events. And so our students are being trained to work the events and learning the equipment, so the lighting, the technology, and so students are truly taking ownership of that. So that's exciting to see in progress. And we've had over 18,000 guests in our Performing Arts Center to date. So it is being used, and it's just been so exciting to see students showcasing talent in the Performing Arts Center. So the Don Tyson School of Innovation learning model, this graphic just represents the initiatives that we have at School of Innovation. So we are working on competency-based learning. You heard tonight just the work of the PLCs in identifying essential standards. Those essential standards are turned into learning goals. So students are able to show competency in those learning goals, and then actually access learning goals beyond their grade level if they demonstrate competency. So those structures are being built and put into place. Obviously, advanced placement opportunities, the foundation of our learning model at Don Tyson School of Innovation, our community partnerships, and just the opportunities that those partnerships are creating for our students. And the partnerships, our partners are helping us write and design curriculum for our classes. Obviously, our concurrent program is one of, you know, the highlights of our campus and the opportunities and pathways we have with Northwest Arkansas Community College, and of course, inquiry learning. So this just outlines some, all of our current career pathways and credential areas that you can get credentials in, and then academic pathways. Our goal for every student at Don Tyson School of Innovation is to graduate with something in addition to your high school diploma, whether that's concurrent credit at different levels that you can be recognized for, or industry certifications. So we have that accelerated pathway, and our charter status allows us to blend some classes, so students have those opportunities to take extra concurrent classes, or do internships, or apprenticeships when they're in 11th and 12th grades. But this outlines our programs, and so you can see that it is extensive, and opening Phase Two certainly expanded our pathways and opportunities for students. We also, academic pathways, again, that concurrent model, the accelerated high school, which, again, our charter status and our innovation status allows us to do with blending some classes together. Advanced placement classes, we do have advanced placement classes, and I'll show you just enrollment in advanced placement classes, but as you will see, you know, our students really, most of our students follow that concurrent pathway, but we still do have those AP classes for students who are interested in those. And then that college and career readiness class, we call it CCR, and it is a required class that, again, has state-required classes for sixth and seventh grades and beginning in eighth grade. We have high school graduation requirements embedded in those classes. And that class really is a foundation, it helps guide students into knowing pathways and opportunities on our campus, because there's a lot going on. So that's just a place, and we, the teacher really guides a student through those options of selecting classes, and really working on those executive skills that are so important. So again, this just kind of recaps those things that we just talked about, and just really emphasizes that personalized model that we offer on our campus. So these are just a glimpse into the number of students choosing AP classes. And so, you know, we are excited that these students are selecting these options, and again, I think that you will see, like, those concurrent numbers, you know, are higher just because that seems to be where most students who want that college experience are focusing on more than the AP selections. So obviously, our eighth graders, because we do have that college and career readiness learning model in an eighth grade, that class, they start earning a credit for, towards graduation, survey of businesses embedded in that. So these are the other classes that our students take in eighth grade that they can earn high school credit for, and we actually have seventh graders who get high school credit if they, they can enroll in Spanish I in seventh grade. Obviously, you know, that is a select number of students who are ready for that experience and prepared for that, but we do probably, at this time, I want to say, there's probably 25 seventh graders who are getting their first high school graduation requirement in seventh grade with Spanish I. So these are just the different career and technical programs that we have on campus, and you can see the enrollment in the CTE pathways at Don Tyson School of Innovation. A student may be in a career and technical pathway, but they're also working on the concurrent credit classes too, but this just gives you a glimpse into the numbers that are enrolled in specific programs. We also have outlined the certifications that are associated with these classes that students, part of the curriculum is they go through the industry certification training, and then they actually do the testing before they exit the class. And this is our concurrent numbers for this year. So for fall semester, we've had 351 students enrolled. Actually, that's just the number of concurrent classes being taken. We have eight students who will graduate with an associate's degree this year, seven students who will graduate with 30 concurrent credit hours, which is considered an early college experience, and then we have seven seniors who will have a certificate of proficiency in general studies, 16 hours. So we have students who will graduate with hours less than 16, but they are, these are the three levels that are, you know, recognized and that they get recognition for. And then we also obviously have a great partnership with NWTI, CNA. We have 16 students who are Don Tyson School of Innovation students, who are in the CNA, PCA+ classes, and then, you know, we're considered a secondary site for NWTI, so we have students from Springdale and other local high school campuses outside of the district who come on our campus to take the CNA classes, and that is the same for Diesel. So 20 of our students are in Diesel, and then we also have students coming from outside of Don Tyson School of Innovation. And then we have nine of our students who go on other campuses to take classes from NWTI that we don't offer on our campus. And so this is just a recap and just some other things that we have on campus for student choice, voice, and programming. So we talked about that CCR model. We initially started it in eighth through 12th grades, and just realized the value of that class, and last year, we expanded it to sixth and seventh grades, and have just had great success with that in supporting students. And then obviously, we have clubs that are associated with all of our career and technical classes. We obviously don't have a lot of the AAA sanctioned athletics. We did add cross-country as our first AAA sanctioned sport this year, so we're so excited about that. But we do have a great intramurals program, where we just have a six-week period that we do different intramural sports for students to be involved in. And we continue to have students who are classified as digital phoenix students, and that means you're enrolled on our campus full-time, but you take an online course. It could be one or two courses, so you're not really a blended student, you're on campus every day, but you do take one or two online courses, so you're classified as a digital phoenix. A blended student is someone who comes on A days or B days, we're on block scheduling, and so on A days, they take, may take face-to-face classes, on B days, they're enrolled in the classes they're taking online. So those are our blended students. And then, of course, we continue to have a K-12 virtual model that we are so proud of, and last year, it was a little bit crazy with the number of virtual students that we had, and just kind of had, you know, built that program, the K5 program quickly, but the teachers did a great job, and I'm just so proud of where we are with K5 virtual right now, and the learning experiences that those students have. And 612 virtual has been in place, I think this is the sixth year, and so every year, I think we just continue to learn and grow, and this year has been a little bit different, that we're able to offer some experiences to our virtual students. They've been to Crystal Bridges, and they've done some things with Walton Arts Center. There've been days that we've designed so our virtual students would actually come and access the science labs and do labs on the DTSOI campus. So it's just really neat to see how that program is developing and growing. And we continue to do Real World Wednesday, which was part, you know, of the original design of Don Tyson School of Innovation. And so every Wednesday, we bring in community partners, industry experts, to share their career, what it takes as far as credentialing or education to be in that role that they're in today. So that program was on pause last year because of COVID, but it's thriving this year, and so we've had a great Real World Wednesday experience for our students this year. And looking ahead, we have some exciting news. So we just worked out a partnership with SAMM Walton College of Business, and so we're partnering with NWHAC and developed a pathway where our students would be able to start the SAMM Walton College of Business courses, and when they are a senior, they would leave short three classes of having an associate's degree. So when they graduate, they could attend NWHAC and take three classes in the summer, have an associate's degree, and enter SAMM Walton College of Business as a sophomore. If they didn't want to take those three classes during that summer session at NWHAC, they would just be able to pick up those courses when they start at the University of Arkansas. They just wouldn't have that associate's degree status, but they would have all that coursework and concurrent credit to be able to enter that. So that just has been exciting, working with NWHAC and University of Arkansas to develop that pathway, and so we're excited to be able to start that with students. We will also be adding an associate's of graphic design for our students next year. And so every year, our enrollment, obviously, no one is zoned to go to school at Don Tyson School of Innovation, so we do an intent to enroll. So this year, we have two information nights for families, January 25th and February 9th, and then our intent to enroll goes live on February 15th. So thank you for letting me serve Springdale Public Schools at Don Tyson School of Innovation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland and School Board. This evening, I have several items for your consideration. The first one are the November 2021 financial statements. You can see in what I've presented for you this evening, I made some notes on it. The month of November is always a heavy month for us in terms of tax collections, because taxes are due, what is it, in October? And so we always receive a large tax settlement in the month of November. We will not see significant tax collections until about April or May, they'll start picking up again, and that's based on the new assessment, when the tax bills go out and people start paying at that time. So therefore, this time of year, our balances are a little higher than, well, quite a bit higher, actually, than they will be at the end of the year. So this is typical for this time of year. You will notice that I put a new sheet in there for you this month, and it's a summary of our building fund projects. I have hard copies, if anybody would like one, I'm just going to hand those to you real quick. As you all know, the voters approved refinancing our debt, which allowed us to, we're allowed to sell bond issues, which will generate money for us for future building projects. So over the next three, four years, we have a lot of building projects in the works. So it's a very exciting time for our students. On this spreadsheet that you have in front of you, you can see that I'm estimating around $150 million will be spent on facilities for our students. So it's a very exciting time. This $150,000 will be paid with the bond proceeds that I just mentioned, as well as partnership funding that we have been approved for. You can see on there, I think it's around $44 million that the state is contributing to help us for these projects, and then the balance will be paid for with unrestricted dollars that are currently in the building fund. So once again, it's so many projects that we're getting ready to embark on, and so I wanted to give you all a visual, so that you could kind of see what we're looking at. Obviously, we're still in the planning phases on the major projects at Springdale High, Southwest Junior High, and Central Junior High, so the numbers that I have listed there are estimates, so, but we hope to go to bid on those in the spring. So do you all have any questions on this? Is this, is this helpful for you? I hope it is. It kind of shows you what's coming up, what we're looking at. So it's exciting. Dr. Cleveland, do you have anything you wanted to say about any of that?
I'm just going to share an excerpt.
Oh, okay, sure. Okay, if you have any, if you don't have any questions about the November financials?
I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Emerson, to approve the financials as presented. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Well, Board, as you are aware, Springdale Schools is the second-largest employer behind Tyson Foods in this area. As many employers are seeing problems in their attracting workers, we are not immune to that. Two of the pinch-point areas for us have been bus drivers and substitute teachers. We have had to, unfortunately, cancel routes on a, on a regular, ongoing basis due to lack of drivers, and then we are, on some days, it's been a real challenge to cover all of our classes that need to have a substitute teacher. So two of our districts in this area, two of the districts to our north, increased substitute teacher pay. Since we're all drawing from the same pool, we very quickly realized that our substitutes were leaving us to go to other districts. So we have made the recommendation to increase our substitute teacher pay, to compete, and to be able to retain our substitutes that we do have. On our bus drivers, you know, it's kind of hard to get the kids to school if they, we don't have a bus to pick them up and a driver. So we have implemented a bus driver attendance bonus. So we have implemented a bus driver attendance bonus to attract, to encourage our bus drivers to, which they're good, obviously, but to encourage them even more to not miss school if at all possible. Both of these recommendations are going to be paid for with ESAR dollars, our CARES Act funding. One of the uses of CARES Act funding is continuity of operations. This meets the definition of both of those. We're struggling. So we're going to use these funds to help us shore up these problems. We are seeing an increase in folks applying to be substitutes in our district. So we're encouraged by that. And then we continue to do all that we can to recruit bus drivers to come and work with us. So do you all have any questions about this?
I was just wondering, have you seen a change in bus drivers yet?
Well, we do have some bus drivers in the works to get their training. And we are seeing an increase in attendance. However, you know, we're getting ready, we're hitting the holidays. So this week's a hard week as people are making plans to leave. And so, anyway.
How many bus drivers short are we?
I asked that specific question today. We have, I think the number they told me, we have seven routes that are currently open. But that's not the whole picture because also we have no substitutes to drive in the event that someone is out. So we estimate about 15 drivers are needed to get us where we need, where we want to be.
How many routes a week average are canceled?
That's a good question. I'm not the best person to answer that. I'm going to, I hesitate to throw out a number. This week's hard. This week, yeah, we're seeing it, yeah.
But that's just the ones that go to and from SOI or have kids? I guess, do they send out all of them?
And SOI is a hub too.
Yeah.
So that creates that.
We're not unique in this. Other districts are experiencing the same shortages that we are. We never have an abundance of bus drivers in a good year, but this year, it's a real struggle. I'm studying my CDL book. I haven't taken my test yet, but I'm studying it.
Can you speak to benefits?
Sure.
Because I don't know about that.
Sure.
Maybe some.
Yeah. Yeah. Bus drivers are no different than any other employee of our district in that they do, everyone is a member of teacher retirement system. So that's a benefit to bus drivers as well as any employee. And once they have put in five years of credit, then they are eligible for a pension at age 60 for the rest of their lives. So that's one benefit. In addition, our contracted bus drivers do receive sick days, just like, of course, we don't want them to use them, we want them to come to work. But they do, they do receive sick days, just like any other employee as well. And then our health insurance, our full time bus drivers are eligible for our health insurance. Otherwise, the general rule is you have to work 30 hours a week to qualify for our health insurance, but there's an exception for full time bus drivers. Almost all of them are full time. We do have some that are part time, but the majority are full time.
Are you classified as a part time teacher?
Yes, yes. Some of our part time drivers do have other jobs in the district and drive for us either a morning or an afternoon.
So do we have like a lot of coaches and staff that have learned to drive, so we don't have a problem with that driving?
Yes, I interview each coach. And the coaches, as Coach Del can attest, they all line up to take their CDO. It's an agreement, personal agreement, coaches and I have together. They've done a really good job, and we started this eight years ago. Really trying to ramp up the opportunity for coaches who might like to drive their own game bus or drive their friend's game bus at their school. So they do that, and they take care of one of them. I know my son, who also is a coach, drives his own game bus, also drives a route. They've really stepped up now.
All right. Board, the next item that I have for you this evening is a staff bonus proposal. Dr. Cleveland, before I get into the actual mechanics of it, is there something, anything you would like to say about it, or do you want me to just take off?
Talking about the next P?
Yes.
Yes. I want to thank you for your willingness as a school board to invest in staff, volunteer staff. I know that today, after the announcement from yesterday afternoon, that you'd be considering the final approval bonus. I literally cannot, and I haven't yet, and I'm trying to apply to all of the staff members. I hope you have also received. But it's a situation today where we wanted to retain our employees. I talked to some of you, a lot of you in Rock, and some today, about the number of people who are considering and getting out of the profession. We are not immune from that too. That has happened in several resignations as of today. That's hard. I'm against, in fact, I've just seen an annual principal about a counselor.
Board, I'm sure that you've heard the same conversations I have, and that is that this year is as difficult, if not harder, than last year during the pandemic. So I think all of our employees were very appreciative of your commitment to doing what we can for them. There's, the parameters of this bonus are just like last year. We just changed the dates on it. It's $800 to each full time employee. We have defined full time employee. They have to be employed now, they have to be being paid now. And we just modeled after last year. There is a small payment to substitutes of $250 who meet a certain qualification, having sub so many days in the fall semester. This, we are not using, I want to make sure you understand, we are not using the CARES Act funds or ESAR dollars for this purpose. That's not an acceptable use of these, of those funds, so we are not using those. These are mainly district dollars that will be paying for this bonus. So I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have about it.
Do you want to add any other questions? I know this is a formality.
I just want to say thank you for putting that in the budget, because I wanted to know that we do appreciate the hard work. You know, it may not be a thing of any, but I hope that they realize it's a token from us, from all of us, as appreciation of what we do. And I have heard from a lot of people that this year is harder than last year.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah. Well, our commitment to our employees is to, and your commitment, I know, is to reward our employees as much as we possibly can while staying fiscally responsible. I'm sorry?
But it's a fine line.
It is a fine line, it is. So we're happy that we're able to do this. Happy we're able to do it.
Just as a point of clarification, I don't know if I missed anything. Mr. Hayes, did you need a pay increase for substitute teachers and bus drivers to be promoted?
Well, it certainly won't hurt my feelings if y'all rubber stamp that. No, let's do them separate.
Okay, board, I need, let's start with the pay increase for substitutes and attendance incentive for bus drivers. I have a motion.
I have a question, I want to approve the pay increase for substitute teachers.
I have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the recent pay increase for substitute teachers and attendance incentive for bus drivers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Board, we also need an approval for, and again, this is a formality, approval for the staff bonus. I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mrs. Creek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Board, the next item that I have for you this evening is, we have a related party transaction that we need to disclose. We have an employee by the name of Amber Harwell. Ms. Harwell is a pre-K teacher at George Elementary, but she also makes and sells school T-shirts. So we would like to disclose that so that we have the opportunity to purchase T-shirts from her if it's in our best interest to do so. Do you have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the related party transaction.
I have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the related party transaction. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Mr. White has an update on construction projects.
Thank you. We've worked really hard to keep this.
It's on that fine line, across the fiscal responsibility.
Well, just keeping, I mean, we've got to stay on top of it. When we're trying desperately to, I mean, every district in the state, every district in the nation is fighting to make sure we keep our employees. And you're staying on top of it and make sure that we, that we're right there with you. Thank you.
All right. I've got a construction update. So Rollins Elementary, everything's done, just a punch list, just minor stuff to finish up. We do have playgrounds to finish, which we'll work on over the break. The only major things that aren't here, there's some graphics that goes on the wall. Those are back ordered. And there's a curtain for the gym that's been back ordered, but other than that, it's up and going. They moved into it last week. So it's functioning good. This is a teacher's lounge on the first floor. These are just some rooms on Area C. All the furniture's been in, and we're using the areas that Annette wanted the teachers to use. So this is a multi-use lab in Area C. It's on the north side. So it's just, for all the, all the classes will schedule times to use it. It's just a big collaboration room. That, that one is actually on the sec, this one is on the second floor. And in the glass walls, you actually look down into the first floor. It has a multi-use lab down there, too. It's just some more rooms. They've actually already moved into this one, and they're using it as it was designed for. That's another, another room. And that, that was all of the pictures we had at Rollins. But like I said, it's pretty much done. So if any of you guys want to go to it in January or whenever, just let me know, and I'll meet you guys out there. Southwest, we are, WDND's the architect there, and they're still working with staff at Southwest to come up with a plan for that building. So we actually have, the next meeting is Thursday. So we should have new drawings and renderings on Thursday. But they've been getting a lot of input from staff and, and students at Southwest. So Central, Architecture Plus is here, Michael Johnson is out here. So we've got some very new renderings, and these, this is actually a 3D video. It's pretty short, that shows the exterior of the building. So that on the right was actually the cafeteria. And then, so we're going around clockwise on this. So, so this is actually from Huntsville, looking at the building. Now, this is Gutten Son, that's the old library. The part there with the awning is the main office. That was the old cafeteria, new library. Yeah. And then that's an academic classroom wing. And then when you come around the south of it, there's a courtyard. And there's another academic wing on the west side. And then all of the lab areas, Agra, Construction, will be on this west wall. They have garage doors for access for loading and unloading supplies. Your kitchen is, is pretty much on this northwest corner. So there's a loading area there. There'll be dumpsters and everything that's screen walled in. And that's actually the cafeteria in the kitchen right there on the end. That's setting about where the tennis court is now. So that building's going to move west and south quite a bit. We did have to add more parking to get to 300 spaces. That is the, the new cafeteria. And then there's, the gym is kind of south of that cafeteria. And then Michael, he shared some interior renderings on what it will look like. So that's the existing gym. That's one view of the student dining. That's a different angle of the student dining area. Music room. There's actually a Lowe's room in part of the building. The learning stairs in the building. So that, that's all of Southwest. I mean, Central. We've got a lot of projects getting ready to start. So, but. No, the main gym, it will be in the same location, which is south of the new cafeteria.
Interesting part is the cafeteria section at entrance, also the gym entrance. The concession stand, which is to the gym, will be multi-use as you.
Yeah.
It's a cool concept. Of course, we can always have Michael Johnson walk through it and go through it step by step.
Yeah. Yeah, we tried to make it where you would have a cafeteria entrance or gym entrance separate from the main office entrance, so you could kind of partition off for events, you know? Okay. Springdale High, this is some, just some renderings of the exterior. We did make a few changes on it to try to meet the budgets. There's a view of it looking from the football field and then from the courtyard. So it is actually being bid, and we're getting estimates back on it now, so. And then we just got these drawings today. It's at George Elementary. And we'll have some actual floor plans and interior drawings tomorrow on this. And this is one of the versions. It's Core Architects, so this is one of the versions Dusty came up with. Here is another version of it, what it could look like. But it's a academic wing and library is the space that we're approved to add on to. So we'll know more tomorrow what the interior could look like on this project, and we'll be getting started on it. It's the last elementary that didn't have a media center.
Long term project?
Yep. Yep. Okay. And then just an update on the middle schools. Over the Christmas break, we've got contractors scheduled to get all the electric and the data conduits put in place. Some of those are in the ceiling, some are on the roof, to try to get all the infrastructure in. Well, there's no kids and staff in the buildings. And then as soon as the units get here, we will either pick a weekend or a spring break. Just depends on when the units arrive. Do what?
Are the HTRK units backward?
Yeah, they're in production, but a lot of times, right now, they're, they're talking 25 to 30 weekly times on some of the units. So we're just having to wait. We have some in place, we have some on site now, but it's really not enough to, to cover the cost of the crane and all the, all the people to do the installs. We need, we need to get more units there to utilize the crane better.
Do these units produce in America or?
Yep, they're out of Texas.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Yep, they're in Houston. So, but like I said, we, we have received about 13 units at Joe Kelly and 13 at Helen Tyson. Expecting some more to be in over the break. But we can't lift, we can't lift any of the units or anything with kids in the building because we're having to use a crane to reach far enough over the roofs.
This will totally heat and cool all of our gyms?
Yeah, once we finish these middle schools, all of our gymnasiums will have heat and air, both. They have, they have heat now, but they'll have central heat and air.
So if you remember, these are projects that were using state dollars, that partnership dollars, and our ESR dollars.
Okay. That's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Busy man for a while.
Yep, we are. That's right. All right, thanks.
Say it to me, I'll block that later.
Yeah, yeah, I'm ready to move some dirt. Thanks.
Good evening, Board. I have what you've grown accustomed to in the realm of COVID reporting. And this is the historical data that you've seen from last October. You'll see in this month's data, there's a slight uptick. Remember though, that November data for this purpose was a short month because of moving board meetings. Overall, we are increasing a little bit in our numbers. It's following the state numbers. I think I say that every month, but it's true every month. Something to note on this slide is the test to stay participants. We had 195 students and staff participate in test to stay. 15 of those tested positive, that's about 7.7%. So 180 of those that participated got to stay in school and not quarantine. So that's a win. You can see, based on the PCC numbers, 188 chose not to participate in test to stay, so it's about half and half. But I do know just from feedback, hearing from parents, the ones that participate are very, very thankful and happy that it's an option for their kids to continue in school. So we're appreciative of that and continue sharing our information with other districts as they consider implementing the program. So this spreadsheet has kind of grown over time, but there is a lot of data there. Something that is just real easy and eye-catching is that AKI index. So the AKI index, we've talked about before, shows community spread. This is not particular to our students and staff, but it's a good indicator of what our numbers are going to do. When we start to see the numbers in the community creep up, we know to begin to expect that in our school as well. So we've pretty much leveled out with a few tics up here and there. It will be interesting to see what happens after the holidays, as some would predict that we may see some increases after people gather over Christmas and New Year's. But we'll continue to watch that and hopefully have only minor upticks as we continue to work through this. Do you have any questions about COVID data?
Do you get, sorry, do you get any feedback from parents that opt out of test to stay? As far as why they don't want to participate?
The only feedback I've gotten has been that they just don't want their kids to be tested every day. They don't think their kids would tolerate it well, that sort of feedback. And the ones I've heard from have been elementary, and, and I understand that, you probably understand that with young kids. The COVID test is, is difficult on, on young ones sometimes. So that's been the only feedback that I've gotten, is just they didn't want their child to be tested every day, and they had an option for them, they had somebody to be at home with them, yes.
Did we see any change or any improvement for Thanksgiving?
The week after Thanksgiving was actually pretty level. Last week and then in this week has kind of been creeping up. So I don't know if that's late, late results from Thanksgiving. But we are, in the past couple of weeks, have started creeping up a little bit. It seems to be in a few little pockets, not necessarily across all buildings, but a few buildings have had some little pockets where I would say seven or so positive cases, kind of all. We can see exactly where the cluster is. All right, thank you.
Ms. SCA here? They left a, we're asking for. I did not see anyone sign up for patron comment, but before I close the meeting, is there a patron comment? Sorry. You're fine, they're fine.
You'll just please give your name?
Yes. Hi, my name is Carla Santana, and again, I'm always too short for this microphone. I want to start off saying thank you for considering a pay raise for subs. I am, I've been a substitute teacher for the Springdale District the last two school years. But here are a few of my concerns. Oh, sorry about that. I have struggled this year with burnout. I'm pretty sure a lot of subs and teachers have. I've come to realize that being a sub who is available for all schools, there are certain things with certain grades that I was not prepared to handle. First off being teaching certain subjects. I've had the issue in a classroom with math where I couldn't necessarily show the kids how they are supposed to get us, do a certain problem. But I would tell them, hey, I can get you the answer, but this is not how it was shown to me when I was in school. I really thought going into this job last school year that having three kids and loving to work with kids was enough, but I soon realized it was not. I was fortunate enough to have experience in childcare earlier that year. That really taught me things like how to redirect when there is conflict within the classroom. It has really helped me with subbing for pre-K, elementary school, and even some middle school. High school just came a little bit more naturally to me. And so really, again, I'm really grateful for a pay raise. But at the same time, there are things that I do believe that need to go into being a substitute teacher, like more training, other than just using the system to accept a job. A lot of, another issue that I personally have been having is just certain jobs, I'll, I'll accept a job, and then the day before, I'll get a call, hey, the teacher doesn't need the sub job anymore. Sorry about that. And it's been happening a lot more this year than last year. So again, those are my concerns, just coming from a substitute teacher.
We appreciate you coming and letting us know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Subbing and creating a time.
Oh, I, I love the school district. I've grown up in it, and it's honestly one of the reasons how I convinced my husband to move us back here with little ones, we have two right now in the Springdale School District. So, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Well, with that, the meeting is adjourned, and everyone has.